Joining us live on Zoom, YouTube, Facebook, get started in a minute. Hi everybody, my name is John Fagan and I am the CEO at Scribe and I'll be hosting you today with my, along with my colleagues Evan Parry and we have a guest speaker Eleanor Green, which we're all here to see. I'll talk more about her in a minute. So I'm going to just launch this poll. It's a question about year-end challenges. What do you find the most difficult? So feel free to answer that if you'd like. It's kind of be interesting for our speaker just to get an idea of where you're at in the audience and you know, tailoring the conversation towards that. So in the next 30 minutes, we're going to be hearing from Eleanor, everything she can tell us about auditing and her experience. And then we'll be handing over to my colleague Evan, who will show you some practical examples of how Scribe could help you. So that would be just three to five minutes. And then after that, we'll go over to the question and answers. So we'll save those till the end. So does that all sound good for you? Type yes in the chat if that is good. Great. So we'll get straight to it. I'd like to introduce you to Eleanor Green. I think this is going to be quite a fun talk. I've been talking to her a bit over, over the last few weeks to organise this. She's quite a fun person and she is the Chief Accountant at a company called Do The Numbers. Really cool name as well for, 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 for the name of a company. I think Eleanor, what was the name of your husband's company?
His company's called Do Science. So he does science and I do the numbers.
Just simple, yeah?
And it means that they look similar, but we don't get them muddled up.
Good, good, good. Yeah. So Eleanor, you've been auditing since 1997 and I don't, I think you're, you're fully busy. You're already auditing 50 large and small councils. So I imagine since 1997, you've had to deal with all kinds of situations and you've had to deal with fraud investigations or all kinds of things. So it's going to be interesting to hear what you've got to say. And you're also Secretary of Parish Council Internal Auditors Forum and then the SLCC in Hampshire. So I'm going to hand over to you Eleanor, just in a moment. I'm just going to have a look at the response. All right. Yes, we've got a great response on the poll. Just if everyone could just submit their final responses there and I'll end it. And then I will share the results with all of you and hopefully that's popped up on your screen. So in terms of the response, the biggest challenge is finding the time to do it and understanding the audit requirements. So those are the two biggest challenges. I imagine Eleanor's got a lot to say on those particular two. So I'm going to hand over to you now, Eleanor. Welcome.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Yes, I've, I actually started doing parish audits as a contractor for the Audit Commission before lighter touch had even been invented. And it's very odd that occasionally I'll hear about a council who say, there's some strange person who ticks backwards in our records from 20 years ago. And it's me. So where are we at? Governance and Accountability, which for those of us who've been around since the Stone Age, used to call the White File, because it used to come out in a white ring binder. It's now a 60, 70 page PDF. Is guidance on the AGR, which used to be called the Annual Return and got renamed the AGR for reasons best known to themselves. The AGR, the annual return form is updated every year. The one for this year is coming out to councils next week or the week after. It basically got approved finally by JPAG, the Joint Practitioners Advisory Group, in the last day or two. So it will be coming out to you. Unfortunately, I can't share it because it's not published. It's not mine to publish. But it will run through. The most important change is a brilliant one. Lots of you will remember that it was called Part One, Part Two, Part Three. Well, there are some councils who got so confused, they filled out all three parts and sent them into the external auditors. Well, it's not parts, they're three completely different forms. Form one is for councils with no transactions. I will hazard a guess that this being an accounting software group, there's nobody here who fills out Form One, because you wouldn't be doing it if you had transactions. Form two is for exempt councils. That is the ones who are more than three years old, haven't had a nasty qualified audit and have both income and expenditure under 25,000. When I come on to, in a couple of minutes, talking about sort of the requirements for how you fill the form out, the key point is that it is total income and total expenditure. If you receive a grant towards an item, the grant is income, the expenditure is expenditure. You cannot net them off against each other to keep yourself below the 25. Form three, which you're all Scribe users, chances are the vast majority of you have over 25,000 turnover. Form three is for all the councils who have to send their forms to PKF. So that is, believe it or not, the minority of councils, because 6,800 councils are below 25,000. There's only 3,100 that are above. So we are the minority, but we're the one that take up all the time. So the key, yeah, the key change to the AGR is that it's now Form One, Form Two, Form Three. On the first page of the new Form Three, which is the one that will go to PKF, if that's your auditor. If it's not, if you're Moors or Mazars, who do between them four counties. They, PKF meet with most of the stuff because they do 17 out of the 19 patches. Moors do one, Mazars do one, but they all work together. So the publication details are on the very first page of the AGR. Publication, and it has been strengthened in this year's governance and accountability, is not just a notice board. In law, and it is in law, publication is on your website. Your AGR has to go on your website, no matter what size of council you are, no matter what transparency code you are. That's the Freedom of Information Act. It's not negotiable. It has to happen. So please make sure that when you publish your AGR, and if you are an exempt council, your full AGR still has to go up on the website. So that is Section One, the Governance Statements, Section Two, the Accounting Statement and your Internal Audit Report. Those three go on your website, not negotiable. It's the law. If you are an exempt council and you don't do it and an elector or somebody else reports you, the external auditors will come down on you like a tonne of bricks, charge you money and make you do it. So publication, absolutely key. So sorry, I've got on my other computer, I've actually got the draft form for this year. So the, one very, very common error that comes up for councils that send their returns into the external auditors is that when they have minuted approval of the AGR, they have not made it clear that they are approving Section One and then Section Two. Section One is the Annual Governance Statement. That is the assertions that say, we've done a decent job of maintaining the council's records. So that is, we've obeyed the law, we've got controls, we've done stuff. So you approve that you've done that. Only once you've approved that you've done that, then you then approve Section Two, the Accounting Statement, saying, having placed reliance on the controls we've just minuted, we've approved, now you can accept our accounts. That is the logic for why the minute, if the external auditor, whichever firm it is, asks you to see the minute of your approval of the AGR and they jump up and down and say you haven't done it wrong. The key, key point is that you have to say, our controls work and here's our account based on the controls. Yeah. So it's, they are being pedantic, but we auditors are pedants. It's our job. So that's the key point is to get that done. And then of course, the approval of the AGR has to be by the 30th of June. Again, that's in the law. It's not negotiable. The external auditors can give you an extension for submitting it to them. But if the minute date is after the 30th of June, you will get a qualified audit, you will get marked down for that. And there's nothing they can do. It's, they would be breaking the law if they gave you an extension. Somebody's just asked about restating. We'll come to that when I nip down through the, the new Section Five. So the AGR form basically has not changed very much. There's a couple of very minor changes. One of which is that for councils covered by the Small Transparency Code, the compulsory one, under 25,000, the internal audit assertion actually says that the internal auditor has checked that the council has complied with the Transparency Code. We internal auditors have had a few comments on that one, but it's what's been put in. We have to sign it. So for councils over 25,000, so the gap between 25 and 200, technically not covered by the Transparency Code all, but still covered by the Freedom of Information Act. Still got to have a website, still got to follow the Model Publication Code. That doesn't mean publish the Model Publication Code. It means follow it, as in publish the documents on it, not just publish the original FOI document. For councils over 200,000, they should be complying with the big Transparency Code, but it is not compulsory. So you can't be hassled by an elector for it. But on the other hand, as PKF, NAO, SIPFA and all of the consulting bodies have said, the most common elector challenges are in councils that are not transparent. So you'll save yourself a stack of time on dealing with FOIs and frankly, snotty electors by putting as much as you possibly can onto the website. Because people then find out how boring you are, no, how exciting and dynamic you all are. But genuinely, they find out what you're actually doing. So they don't bossip about stories about. So the, I'll just quickly go through. So the internal audit report on the AGR, your internal auditor should be working with Section Four of the Practitioner's Guide. If your internal auditor is not familiar with that guide, frankly, what are you paying them for? Internal audit for parish councils is not about ticking down the bank statement. If you look at the, the Section Four of the Practitioner's Guide, which was rewritten by the Audit Forum last year, there is a checklist for internal auditors, each of the things they're signing off. If your internal auditor is not asking to see the minutes, the risk assessment, standing orders, the fixed asset register. Again, what are you paying them for? Because they are not actually protecting you from an elector challenge or from an external audit query. So do make sure that you've had, you've had a look at it and make sure your auditor has had a look at Section Four before they sign off their part of your AGR form. The big change in the guidance this year is that the Internal Audit Forum, and in fact, I will call him out. We've got the chairman of the Internal Audit Forum hiding on the screen here, Tim Light. He has put together, he, he organises it, I type it, a national group of internal auditors trying to improve best practice. And our big project this year was the fact that Section Five of the Governance and Accountability, which is for you guys, clerks, was unreadable. I'm an auditor. I love this stuff. It was unreadable. Nobody was using it because it was horrible to read. So what we did was we've made it hopefully readable, clear, specific on each item. So it's now got a bullet point for each of the assertions, what you should be following with links to the legislation. So when councillors go, well, why are we doing that? Why do you want us to do that? There is a link in the Practitioner's Guide, straight to the clause of the legislation that you can stick under their noses and go, it's not me, it's government. So hopefully that will reduce queries. Each of the assertions, sample documents are now in Section Five. To be honest, as clerks, the, those bits are all a bit wordy, the key bits. And I've seen a question in the chat. So we will, let's quickly run through what goes into each box on the accounting statements and about restating and other such joys. So I'm just scrolling down because it's a very long section, Section Five, but it does get to the right bit. Down past joint committees, they've been clarified. So line one of the AGR, I'm assuming everybody here has seen an AGR. So if I run through what the lines are, then it will make sense. Balance is brought forward. Please make sure it agrees to what was signed off by the external auditor, not the original one sent in before changes. It's a stupid point, but you will get another qualified audit if you haven't taken on board what they said last year. So make sure that if you have to restate figures, you mark, restate, put the numbers in with how they should be. And if it has had to be restated from last year, you write restated underneath it. I think the electronic AGR lets you do it. If not, you may have to put it on with a picture. Precept, just the precept. For those councils still lucky enough to get other community support grants from their boroughs, that goes in other income. Only the precept is in box two, line two, and the precept figures are public. There is now in the Governance and Accountability Guide, a link to the government list of every precept in the country. So if you try to tell the external auditors that you're on 24,000, they can check. It also means that you don't have the risk of getting it wrong, especially for certain councils. Don't, certain districts are not very good at sending out a detailed sheet. You can check what they have submitted to central government by looking on that. Other receipts, everything else apart from the precept. If you are a Receipts and Payments Council, other receipts will include VAT. If you're an Income and Expenditure Council, it will not include VAT, because that will be like, line seven, eight, adjusting entry. Again, in the new Section Five, we've put quite a lot of detail about what RMP and INE mean. I know that Scribe, it has the button for switching from one to the other, but people still get muddled. So please read Section Five thoroughly if you're at all unclear and if in doubt, talk to your internal auditor. The main point is net, is about netting off, which there were, I don't know if anyone here had problems with netting off last year. PKF rather jumped the gun and said that netting off was allowed. No, it's not. Netting off, if you have a bill from a playground maintenance company and you get a credit note, a two, two-party netting off can happen. Invoice, credit note, fine. If you have a bill from a playground company and a receipt from an insurance company, they cannot net off because it's different parties. So if the receipt isn't from the same person as the expenditure, the receipt goes in income, the expenditure goes in payments. Somebody's just asked about didn't include VAT in last year. If they were on Receipts and Payments, how did they do it then? If they weren't on Receipts and Payments, no. If you're not on Receipts and Payments for Income and Expenditure, that your income lines will all exclude VAT. If you're on RMP, I would suggest talking to your internal auditor and find out what happened. Staff costs, clerks are staff. Clerks are employees. They have employment rights, but they also have requirement to be employees. If you are aware of clerks who are still not employees, they and their councils are knowingly breaking the law. End of. So clerks are employees. Line four is staff costs. It is only the cost of employing people. So it doesn't include home office, because of course, if there was a parish council office, there wouldn't be, those costs would be in line six, other expenditure. So line four is only costs of employment, gross pay, pension costs, employers' NI. So that's what goes in line four for all of your employees. And even if the employee is grant funded, for example, litter pickers in some areas, the litter picking grant goes up into income, cost of the litter picker goes in line four. Somebody's just said about having relatives undertaking their audits. I would suggest you get them to read Section Four and realise they are breaking the law. And yes, I suspect Mazars would raise concerns. Yeah, not going to go there. Line five, loan interest capital repayments, that is the total amount paid to the PWLB in the year. Again, your PWLB statements will specify that and all PWLB balances are public knowledge. There is now a link in Governance and Accountability to the PWLB Monthly Report of All New Loans Issued and the Year-End Report of the Balances and Interest Paid in the Year. So public knowledge. Don't try to hide it. For those with long memories, the Briarly case was a clerk who took out loans and didn't tell the council. That's one of the reasons they now publish all of the information about loans, so that everyone can be, everyone's knowledge is public. Somebody's asking about councillor allowances done through the payroll. They are not a staff cost because members are not employees. It is a, it's an other expenditure. I will double, I will double check that one. Councillor's Company who provides the payroll service, no. They are providing the service of doing paperwork. They are not employees. So if you're, lots of people have people like Humphries and DCK to do their payroll. That's a professional service with VAT on it. Box six, not box four, sorry, line six. I always called it boxes and I've had to retrain my brain to do lines. So yeah, loan, loan capital and interest repayments, use the figures from the PWB. That should be the only person councils are borrowing from, apart from the occasional HP agreement. Again, if you've got HP agreements, make sure your internal auditors checking them thoroughly. So all other payments, everything else. And again, everything else, including VAT paid out if you're on RMP. So little councils excluding VAT if you're on INE. So it's worth being very aware of which accounting basis you're on. And for those who have to change over when you hit the 200,000, start working on it during the year and make sure your year-end figures are right. But there's a couple of experts on the screen here who are very good at handling the switch from one accounting basis to the other. They've got Scribe in their username, so they could take that one. So all other payments, yeah, everything else. So balances carried forwards is line seven. In a council doing RMP, balance is carried forwards equals bank account to the penny. It cannot be anything else. If you are doing a receipts and payments basis, it equals the bank reconciliation. If you're on an income and expenditure account, it can be miles off. Because for instance, big councils with debtors, creditors, accruals, prepayments, all sorts of bits and pieces. Which is why for big councils, when the external auditors ask about the reconciliation between line seven and eight. So line eight is the cash and short-term investments. So that will be your current account, your instance access savings account, CCLA, Public Sector Deposit Fund, things like 90-day bank accounts, all of that. But it's the reconciled balance, including uncleared checks. Uncleared checks used to be quite simple. They were checks. They hadn't cleared the bank. Now lots of us using electronic payments and the external auditors and the NAO and SIPFA are very clear. Electronic payments are only on the bank reconciliation if they have been submitted at the council's end and haven't cleared the bank. So forward dated payments are creditors. They're not uncleared payments. Direct debits and standing orders are never uncleared payments. They are always treated on the day they happen. Hopefully, those with, who remember the fun and games when the PWLB took all of their payments on the first of April, not the 31st of March and stuffed up lots of people's accounts. They admit that they were in the wrong because their year-end figures didn't match what they'd done on their direct debits. They've learned it won't happen again. But your bank in, in, in a, in a RMP council, line seven equals line eight. It just does. For an INE council, you will do a reconciliation between the two. Rialto's does a report of it. Scribe does a report of it. Edge does a report of it. Sage attempts to do a report of it. Xero attempts to do a report of it. But all of the software that is sector-specific easily does a report between line seven and eight. Checking the account and savings account, yes. Both go into the AGR, all bank accounts. I mean, there are big town councils that I audit that have 11 bank accounts. All of that, the whole balance of cash held goes into the one line eight of your AGR form. Two-year bond, that is technically a long-term investment. So it should not be in your bank reconciliation. It should be in your fixed asset register. When you bought it, you spent that money and it then went into your asset register. And when you sell it and buy another one, it will be income and expenditure. That's a bit of a can of worms that will be sorted another year. So yeah, cash and short-term investments. So the local authority property fund is an investment. RMP, does line three include VAT? For, for an RMP council, VAT is in line three and in line six. For an INE council, VAT isn't in either of them. It only appears in the reconciliation between line seven and eight, because it's a balance sheet account. Fixed assets, we love fixed assets, don't we? No, we all hate fixed assets. The one, when fixed asset registers first came in, I was auditing an MOD base. And I said, I think you've got some gaps in your register. And they went, well, what? I said, well, the building we're sitting in for a start. So you couldn't make it up. Assets in councils are recorded at historic cost. If your village hall was built in 1905 for £101, that is what it goes in the accounts as and stays there forever. Why are the councils not have reconciliation? Think of your local county council. If they put their assets, i.e. schools, council buildings, all the buildings they own into the fixed asset register to make their balance sheet balance, they'd have to put that in their reserves. My local county council is Hampshire. The castle is valued at around £100 million. How would they ever justify raising a precept if the assets were in the, in the balance sheet? That is why fixed assets in local government are not in the balance sheet. And if they're not in the balance sheet, there cannot be depreciation. The revalued assets, which would generally only be freehold buildings and there's no requirement to do it, your insurer might want it, but it doesn't need to go into the asset register. You would then explain the basis for revaluing and what it was revalued at and alter your asset register. The other fun side of asset registers is of course, you take over as a new clerk. You look at the asset register and you go, well, that's a beautiful piece of art. It bears no relation to the insurance schedule or what the council actually owns. You are allowed to massively review the asset register. If you have a good reason, like you've taken over as the clerk and you've looked, sent the councillors out to identify everything and gone, we don't own that, or we don't actually have 16 strimmers in the Tallman's shed because they buy a new one every year and they hadn't taken the old ones off. You are allowed to go through and tidy up your asset register. Perfectly sensible thing to do. So long as when you put the comments on your AGR form, they, it clearly specifies why the asset register has changed by more than. As low as that last week, they just had their toilet filled. Everything was. So oddly enough, they'd been meaning to redo their asset register. Now it's going to start very low and come back up again. But you don't revalue stuff. I'm just looking. Took over a pavilion, recorded at rebuilding value. No. If you take it over and you didn't buy it, you record it at a pound. If it didn't cost you anything, it goes in the asset register at nought. If it didn't cost you anything, it goes in the asset register at nought. A pound so that you can keep track of your register. When, if you, you put in the cost to the council through the cash book. If it didn't cost you anything, you don't put in a cost. Staff spending a mileage on staff costs, no, they're expenditure, they're, they're overheads. Revaluing, re, re, so reinstatement valuation following a refurbishment. The refurbishment costs are an additional asset in the asset register. The original building doesn't change. So yes, you, the best asset registers I've ever seen have original cost, current insurance valuation. And where necessary, any revaluation details. I mean, insurance valuations are a nightmare, that insurers are the only people in the world who think laptops go up in value every year. You know, we all know that a laptop, as soon as you've opened the lid and switched it on, is halved in value. Minimum value to be classed as an asset. Risk assess, that one, take your pick. There is no law on de minimis, which is the minimum value. The key point would be, are we going to use it for more than one or two years? And is it going to be insured against theft? So sometimes you take £50 set of hedge trimmers. Is it worth risk listing them in the asset register? Yes and no. You don't want the asset register to become an inventory because then in a big council, it's a thousand lines long and you need to know how many forks you've got. But take this case of the council who've just had their shed stripped out. Luckily, they did list all of the equipment in there, they've sent their asset register to the insurer. Who's gone, oh, okay, that was approved by council six weeks before the burglary. They will get all of their money. So if you haven't got them in the asset register, you then have to battle with the insurer. So it's, it's, it's a balancing act for your council. You have to, as we pop out, say, risk assess and review for your council, how much you want to put in your asset register, how much it's useful. Including an asset register which includes paths refurbished and leased cemetery. Again, that's a toss up. The land, land is always valued at a pound because you can't sell it because it's community land. Valuing the paths, the other use for an asset register is it becomes a capital improvement register. So you look at those paths, so they're 10 years old, when are you going to have to put money aside to refurb them again? So actually, having them there, knowing that they're breaking up because they're old is useful. And it was a cost that was spent by the council. So it is, you know, if you've got a van and the repair bills are now reaching 20% of its value every year. That's a useful project to be able to look at. Or when you're looking at the age, I mean, the asset registers always have the date of purchase. Because if your skate park is now 15 years old, have you got money aside for the new one? So the asset register isn't just a standalone document, it's part of your risk assessment and your capital planning. And then it becomes useful. So as well as bobbing off people like me. So yeah, so the asset, the asset value, it's, it is artwork, frankly. You, you, you can't, there are, the laws on it are very vague. For the simple reason that parish councils don't have tax implications and therefore don't have to worry about depreciation. Purchase, no, right, okay, purchase land for £3,000. You purchased it, you spent that money, you spent £3,000. It's, it's a real, again, there are different auditors. BDO used to say you should show it as a cost of £3,000 but then hold it at a pound. PKF and Mazars say hold it at 3,000. As long as you can justify what you're doing and you can show you spent the 3,000 on it. Probably keep it at 3,000, but again, see what's been done. And wall heaters, if the wall heaters aren't going to last as long as the refurbishment, is it worth having them as a separate asset with, assuming they're going to need replacing in five years? And the wall that was built behind them will last 50 years. So it's, it's about looking at it as a planning document. If you get your asset register and your risk assessment working together, they're both useful planning documents. Final line, line of the AIGAR to just pick up is, so long, fixed assets and long term investments, yeah. CCLA property fund should be in fixed assets, not your bank account. Unfortunately, yes, that does mean that if you buy a million pounds worth of property fund stuff, it counts as expenditure in the year and it will count as income the year you draw it back. For now, watch this space on that one. Total borrowing, again, make sure that what you put into box 10 agrees with what is on the published record. Again, there is a link in the new section five governance and accountability to that. So there is really no excuse for anyone to get that wrong. Explanation of variances, it's over 15%. So you need to be able to explain how you got to 15%. And if some stuff's gone up and some stuff's gone down within a code, you need to. If, if stuff's gone up and stuff's gone down, you need to justify both. So for instance, on normal expenditure, last year you did a playground, this year no playgrounds. But this year you did a whole refurbishment. So you put both of those happening as the movements. And in big councils, I don't know if there's any big councils, any variance over £100,000 has to be explained. And that's the law. If you recalculate your asset register, do you have to put the new account, the last year restated? No, only, you only are restating last year if you've been asked to change last year. If you've reviewed the asset register and effectively disposed of loads of stuff and added loads of stuff, its movements have been last year and this year. If PKF wouldn't accept your explanation, I would say get your internal auditor on the case to them because that we, if, that, hopefully, the, the new section five guidances, which I've got my other computer behind the screen, has got a lot more clarity about wordings and PKF have accepted what we've put in section five. So if you are following what we've put in section five, hopefully they will accept it. But if they wouldn't, talk to your internal auditor this year, work out what caused the qualification and make sure you deal with it. And a final point before I hand over to Evan is, if you got a qualification, a matter arising, anything like that last year, make darn sure you deal with it appropriately this year or you're going to get it again. Because one of the points they look for is have you dealt with matters raised by auditors? So please get last year's AIGAR out, the one that they signed off and make sure you've dealt with the queries. We'll, I'll let everybody think and unfry their brains for a bit and we'll let Evan talk and I will go quiet for a little while.
Oh, thank you very much, Eleanor. You did a great job there of trying to stick to your talk topics and juggling the chat. True professional. So I just quick question to you before I hand over to Evan. So you can't reveal everything about section five today, but you're speaking next Wednesday. Will you be able to talk more about it then, do you think, or?
If, I think by then, I mean, hopefully by then people will have had it. It will go up on the NELC website. It's basically, NELC have a very clever man who makes it all look pretty and publishes it with everybody's headers on it. And he's great, his, his publishing skills will make mine look boring. As soon as he has published it, it will appear on the SLCC and NELC and probably the external auditors websites. So as soon as everyone's seen it, then we can all be looking at it. And hopefully that will help people's questions. But basically, until it's actually been published, I can't share it because it's not mine to publish.
No problems. Yeah, so just so everybody, all the, the video recording, there's going to be no slides, but any of the answers and questions will be sharing after the event, so don't worry about that. So I'm going to hand over to Evan, who is our sales manager, but he's not very salesy. So he'll be giving you some of these observations of what he's learnt. So over to you, Evan.
Thanks a lot, John. So I'm just going to share my screen with everyone. I apologize for my voice and if I do have a cough and fit, I have COVID at the moment. It's, it's not being too nice to me, so please do bear with me if I just need to pause and to have a bit of a cough. So like John's just said there, I am the sales manager. I recognise quite a few of the faces that I've seen on the webcams today. From meeting with, with you all over the past couple of years. I've recently joined Scribe, I think it was actually just over a year ago that I joined Scribe. And since then, I've met with several hundred councils. And what I've come to learn is that the sort of hierarchy of needs when it comes to the parish council accounts. That's kind of, you know, where I'm working for the most part is meeting with councils, talking about how they're managing their accounts and how they can move on to Scribe. And what I've come to learn really is, this seems like the, the sort of hierarchy of needs of the parish council or town council accounting. So at its, that's, you know, at its core, what we're all trying to do really is to get through that audit, you know, to have that approved and show that we are managing council funds, you know, and taxpayer funds correctly and responsibly. And what we have here really are the, the sort of building blocks of how to get through that audit. And it starts really with administering this. What I mean by this really is, you know, taking care of your cash book and, you know, getting through your, your, your transactions, keeping track of them, doing your bank reconciliations and VAT refunds and just getting through, actually looking after that money. We then have as the next building block, monitoring, which is just, you know, actually keeping track of that money. Where is it going? How are we actually spending it and, and are we following our budgets? And then we have governing, you know, that all important AIGAR, you know, making tax digital, all of these things are incredibly important. And without one, you know, we, we can't get through the next stage. Now, what I've come to, to learn is that this, this sort of building block format isn't really being followed by all, all of the councils out there. And so what I'm going to do with this, this brief session is, I'm going to first make an observation of what I've seen through meeting with councils and then just give you three recommendations on how you can get through to the, the accountability stage in the easiest way possible. So my, my observation is, it seems like a lot of councils really under invest in the, the daily administration. So they, you know, they, they don't really have a, a good cash book that they've invested in. And so what that means is that the level of effort required to actually get through the monitoring and the governing stages is huge. And we have a, a situation where so many councils leave it until the last minute to start doing their bank reconciliations or start looking at how they've actually spent their money throughout the year. And what, getting through this, you know, creating section two of AIGAR is just an incredibly stressful thing. You know, you have sort of a last minute dread situation where my phone rings off the hook from March through to May with, with people who just really need to get their cash book in order. And so it just seems like people are really under, under investing in their daily administration. So I have three suggestions for you. My first suggestion is to think cash book first. Now, thinking cash book first, all that really means is that, you know, the, the foundation level of this hierarchy is your, your daily administration. Does your cash book work for you? That's the most important thing, is your cash book needs to do everything it can for you as the user and for you, you know, you as the council. If you don't have a good cash book, everything else becomes so much harder. So firstly, think cash book first. Now, my second tip is to go to scribecouncil.com and download our year end checklist. It's completely free. It's chock full of information on how to get through the year end process. It's kind of a step by step guide, as you can see here, on how to get through, you know, your, your year end process. It's relevant for receipts and payments and income and expenditure councils, so please do check that out. Like I say, it's completely free and I'm sure my colleague John will, will post this link into the chats that you can click on to that and, and download it. And my third and final suggestion is to have a look at Scribe. It is a fantastic cash book, as you can see here. These are the, the sort of things that Scribe can actually do for you. It's, it's really easy to use, it's a simple system. And it, it's also a cloud based system, so nice and easy to use. It's specifically designed for town and parish councils and it can take a lot of the stress of accounting for you. And what I have here is just a, a sort of question for everyone to think of. It's completely rhetorical, don't feel like you need to answer this, but imagine you had a cash book that was able to do all of your monitoring and governance for you at the click of a button. What would you do with that time that you freed up? You know, from, from March through to May, I found that so many clerks and RFOs are just really racing to get through the year end process and create section two of their AIGAR, their asset register, their explanation of variances, all of these different reports that they need to create. It can be an incredibly time consuming thing to do. If you had a cash book just like Scribe, which can do the whole thing for you, what would you do with that time? I have an example here of one of our customers, Sally Ferguson, her council, Limson Parish Council. They invested in Scribe just last year. And since freeing up all of this time, what Sally was able to do is apply for a bunch of grants and look into how she could spend that money. And what they ended up doing was opening a cafe that's open six days a week, employing local youth. So this is something that, that was completely unachievable before, there was no time to look into grants. And as you can see, Limson, they are a small council, they only have a precept of, of under 20,000. So opening up a new cafe was just completely unachievable until they were able to start applying for those grants and, and seeing the money come in. So that's the kind of thing that, that can be achievable if you free up all of that time over the next couple of months. And it's, it's definitely worth having a look in Scribe. Now, this is our support team, lovely people, all, all smiling, as you can see. They do offer free training and support to all of our customers on an unlimited basis. So if you find yourself in a position where you don't really have anyone to ask questions about the accounting, you know, practices that you need to be following, or you just feel like you need some help from time to time, think about Scribe, all of this is included with the cash book. So it's, it's definitely worth considering, you know, meeting with our, our support team. And with that, I'm going to hand back over to John.
Cool, thank you, Evan. Yeah, that was really good. So Eleanor, I actually really enjoyed all that asset talk because behind me, you can't see in that moment, we have our, our developers working on a new sort of platform for managing assets. So I'm going to be showing them the video because there's loads of good information shared and all the questions coming from the, the audience about managing assets and the, all the issues around it. So hopefully we'll, yeah, we'll be able to gather all that.
I could bore even them about asset registers.
Oh, we might take you up on that, like, we might, yeah.
Quite happily, it's, going back many, many years, people would say to me, what's the best way to manage assets? And up until the last two to three years, none of the softwares have had a really good asset register. Caroline at Rialto has brought one out for hers, yours is really good. Edge's is coming along and actually a good integrated asset register. So when you purchase something, you hit the button to make it an asset. So you're not at the end of the year with the auditor going, no. Going, oh my God, we forgot to add everything. So integrating into the accounting software is a no brainer. And of course, then it means the cost is right, the purchase date is right, the information is right because it's come straight from the purchase invoice.
Yeah, I see we have a question from Sue, yeah. I mean, she's saying it'd be great if it was in Scribe, but it's already. So if you create a payment in Scribe, you can convert it to an asset, but it, uh, straight away. But anyway, so we have more questions, we've got 10 minutes.
I was going to quickly pick up, Rose asked, as a newer clerk, I haven't claimed VAT for three years. I'm confused about the segregation of VAT on the AIGAR, always listed expenses as the total we were charged. Okay, councils that are registered, I'm not going to touch that because most of them know who they are. Little councils, public sector bodies can reclaim VAT even if they are not that registered on a thing called the VAT 126. VAT, the tricky thing with VAT is you can only reclaim it for three years. If you've gone over three years, you've lost it, sorry. Your cash book should always separate out VAT spend from the net cost. So if, for example, you have a bill from Scribe for software for £120, it will be £100 for software and £20 for VAT. And in your account system that goes into your AIGAR, you will show the whole 120, but it will be split into two lines between the cost and the VAT line. A very good practice, one I know you can look up, just picking on them, is there's a parish called Monk Sherborne in Hampshire. They're a very, very small parish, but their clerk also works for a very big council, they're accounting records. Have a quick look if you're confused. I'm, I'm sure there's lots of others, that's just happened to be one I know. So VAT, you should submit a VAT 126 claim every year. Even if you've only got £6 of VAT, you should submit it every year because otherwise it's too easy to lose the three year limit. And you can only, if you want to reclaim it quickly, so you've done a bigger project, then you can reclaim for a minimum of £100. There's a whole load of, in, I think in the VAT section, I'm pretty sure that we put a load of detail and in the internal audit guidance on it. But yeah, basically, talk to your internal auditor, make sure they've not missed any. But if unfortunately, if the VAT's gone over three years, you've lost it. The other question I was asking about, oh, sorry, amazing accounts record is Monk Sherborne. Hang on, let me type it because it's. There we go, Monk Sherborne, very, I mean, a precept of 8,000, very, very small council, but the clerk happens to be highly qualified elsewhere, so she keeps good record. Oh, and they've had a vexatious elector, so their transparency code is spot on. Um, reserves, yeah, if your councils don't have the power to hold savings, if you've precepted money and not spent it, why? Why are you sitting on that money? You've taken it from the local people to spend it on the local people. So you have to justify why you're not spending it. Um, so earmarked reserves are great. But you've got to have a plan for when they're going to go to zero, when you're going to spend that money. They aren't war chests. So if the, if the external auditor has not been happy with your explanation of your reserves. Have a look at it and think in terms of why are we not spending that money that we've taken from the public on the public? Um, it's, it's really that simple. If the project, every earmarked project should have what? New play area, where, next door to the church, when, in three years' time, how much? Forty thousand pounds is the total and we're building it up in four lots of ten thousand pounds. So the day after it's installed, that will go to zero, it's gone. So reserves that haven't moved for two years. Um, why? Um, you know, having a reserve for the community orchard, which has been sitting there since nineteen ninety seven, I've got one of those. Um, that's not a reserve, that's just dead money that you've, you've taken from the public and not spent on the public. So that's whenever you're doing a reserve, reserve for election costs, reserve for election costs. How much was your election cost last time? It goes up in increments of four. If you spent sixteen thousand, you put four thousand, four thousand, four thousand, four thousand, get sixteen thousand, get the bill dropped zero, start again. If you haven't had the bill, drop it back to general reserves. So every reserve should have a date when it's going to drop back to zero. Otherwise, it's a war chest, not an earmarked reserve. And the auditors are getting, um, yeah, I mean, potentially very little gets spent if it's uncontested. Have a bit put aside or the other alternative is you keep your general reserve at the upper limit of what you're allowed to do. And if you have an election cost, pull it out of that. Um, because the general reserve covers contingencies, emergencies, all of that sort of thing. So, and the general reserve, the limits are very clearly stated and have been for years in governance and accountability. It's between three and six months of revenue expenditure. For a council over two hundred thousand pounds, the general reserve shouldn't be much over, um. About a hundred thousand pounds. If it is, I mean, a big council, you know, you take, well, one of the ones I audit, Fleet Town Council. You know, they turn over millions and Covid cost them half a million pounds a year in lost ticket sales for their theatres. So they have reserves to cover that, but you don't have the power. Uh, being told we must hold forty seven thousand in reserves, no matter who, who told you that? Point them at the practitioner's guide, they're wrong, I'm afraid. Your reserve level should be contingent on what your council does, taking into account its size, its spend. But it's related to your revenue expenditure. So, yeah, you don't have the power to take money from the public and leave it in the bank earning point naught naught one H S B C. Um, yeah, so any other questions?
Hey, we've got time for one more question. It'll also be nice to see someone and actually ask a question, so feel free to put your hand up.
Uh, we quickly pick up, somebody said, still in section one oh six, plenty.
Let's get, you ask it, let's get to me, who is that?
Who is that? That was Sue Simmons.
Sue Simmons.
Hi.
You are.
Um, yeah, so, um, we've, we're quite a small, smallish parish, we think. Uh, we're just around about the, um, hundred thousand pound precept or just under. Um, but we've had loads of money in the last couple of years from, um, section one oh six. And frankly, hardly know what to do with it. Um, so we've, we've got sort of projects in the pipeline, but they're all quite long term, they might need planning, that kind of thing. So I always, um, explain on my A G A R, um, you know, where the money's come from, what it's for. Um, you know, and and the fact it sort of sits there year one, year two, year three. But the, the C I L, um, process, I think, gives you five years to, um, to spend the money, is that right?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, so still in section, we'll have timescales and limits on what you can spend it on. So they are specifically earmarked reserves, which in some cases, um, you know, they could sit there for ten years. Because you've received that money not from the taxpayer, but from a developer for a specific purpose. Um, there's a council I deal with who have an, um, endowment fund, they were given some land, they were given a tranche of cash to pay for the maintenance for that land for fifty years. So they're slowly working through that money, but that didn't come from the taxpayer, that came from a developer.
Yeah.
Money that comes with strings, the strings stay attached to it, money that you take from the set, why?
Yeah, sure. While I'm on speaker, can I just say what a brilliant presentation, Eleanor? I don't know how you juggled doing all the questions at the same time as a presentation, well done.
Yeah, that's Sue.
You've also been lucky that the cat didn't crash into my back because she's still there looking quite cross at the moment. I've regularly had the cat hit the back of my head when I'm talking.
Good, good, we'll wrap it up there. So I'd like you all to show your appreciation to Eleanor, dropping a chat update there, just saying thanks, Eleanor. Um, really, really good talk and thank you for taking your time, we'll be getting her back next week, it's much appreciated. We've also got some further support, uh, we can offer you. Um, so I'll just do a quick screen share. So as I said, yeah, so you can go to Scribe Academy here. All these, uh, talks, as you said, as we have said, these, these, where we have guest speakers available to anybody, it doesn't matter if you're a customer or not. It's really nice to see all that appreciation there. Um, so we do have Eleanor coming back next week. And then we've also got some other ones, I'll just drop it in the chat there. Um, yeah, we've got web content accessibility guides coming up in May, we're adding a bunch more. And then you talked about freedom of information requests, that's coming up as well. Um, but I highly recommend you, you, I dropped a link there to the clerk's corner, uh, uh, council, council clerk's mastermind. Um, this is a really good forum, Eleanor's actually active on there herself. Um, you know, people drop any kind of questions and, you know, it's every day and you'll always get support, you know. So that's only posted two, two hours ago, it's four comments, everything gets support from your, from your fellow clerks. As well for the councillors, we have pretty much the same, the councillor's corner, so recommend looking at that. Um, but yes, that's pretty much it, that's a wrap. Um, thank you very much for everyone joining us today and we'll be emailing you with everything after. So just have a really good day and, uh, yes, see you next time.